Good evening and welcome to our executive session and special meeting this evening. At this time we are going to adjourn, we're not going to adjourn, we're going to recess to an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an employee, of an applicant for public employment and to discuss with legal counsel representing the district, litigation or potential litigation to which the district is likely to become party for approximately 45 minutes. Thank you. We are ready for the breakout rooms, Ms. Santello.
My apologies, President Daniels, I temporarily lost internet connection.
That's okay, thank you so much.
Let me work on opening, yeah, just give me a moment to open the room.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, just a moment. President Daniels, I'll open.
I'm sorry? Wait, you're here twice, it looks like, yeah. Wait, you're here twice, it looks like, yeah. Everyone's having internet issues. Everyone's having internet issues. I didn't quite hear you, Ms. Santello, I'm sorry. I didn't quite hear you, Ms. Santello, I'm sorry. Oh, looks like she's logged on here. Oh, looks like she's logged on here.
She just shared that her internet connection was lost again, so she is trying to imagine reboot. She just shared that her internet connection was lost again, so she is trying to imagine reboot.
Is it possible for one of us to be the host? Is it possible for one of us to be the host?
President Daniels, this is Ms. Santello, I've been able to log in again, my apologies. President Daniels, this is Ms. Santello, I've been able to log in again, my apologies. My internet connection is... My internet connection is...
Gone again? Gone again?
So I will open the room again with hopes that I can put you in the room before I'm booted out. So I will open the room again with hopes that I can put you in the room before I'm booted out.
Okay, if not, one of us could possibly become the host and then we could do it as well. Okay, if not, one of us could possibly become the host and then we could do it as well. So just let me know, whatever works. So just let me know, whatever works.
Everyone. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you back to our special board meeting this evening. I'm calling the meeting to order at approximately 6:45. This is a meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this special meeting is to approve a discussion and approval agenda and a consent agenda. Superintendent, interim superintendent Vela, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, President Downs, there is. We do have a supplemental personnel agenda, item 3.02, I believe.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the addition?
I move that we approve the supplemental personnel report, agenda item 3.02.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving, approving adding agenda item. Oh, someone say something?
Sorry, I'm not fast on this stuff. President Daniels, just, just for clarification, on Mr. Heath's contract, is there an end date on that? I didn't see it. It said a beginning date. Does it have to have an end date on it, their contract?
It's my understanding they typically go a year, but can someone else clarify?
Well, I mean, if
Dr. Benner, Berenger can address that. This is for the interim period, Dr. Berenger?
Yes, yes.
Oh, the interim period, I apologize.
Yep. Director Amada, members of the board, interim superintendent Vela, yes, it's for the interim period. We don't have an end date on that because when the interim period ends, that's when that particular contract ends.
And that's how contracts on this particular situation works, is my question. I'm just needing clarification. It doesn't have to state it, right?
Right. In this particular situation, that, that contract will run as long as Israel is in his interim superintendent position.
Okay. Is that also true then? Help me to understand if that's true of our interim superintendent, just, just for clarification.
On the interim superintendent contract, we went ahead and put a date.
Right.
Because I've been directed by the board to put 30 days unless extended. And so that, that is reflected in the interim superintendent contract.
And if those were increased, do they have to go through a whole new contractor? You can just increase the date on those? I'm just curious.
On the interim superintendent contract, the way we drafted it is if it's extended, it would need to be changed and reapproved.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional clarifications? All right. All those in favor of approving adding the supplemental personnel report as agenda item 3.02, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, we are on to our agenda item 2.0, items for discussion and approval. Agenda 2.01. So I don't, I don't know. Okay, so Curtis, help me. Do I need to make a motion to approve this item for discussion first? Does there need to be a motion?
President Daniels, what is, what is the agenda item that you're referring to?
But we're talking about discussion and approval of next steps for hiring a long-term interim superintendent. I believe what we're going to be discussing is kind of the timeline of what we're looking at over the next, whether we're going to post and things like that. The things that happened in the last meeting that we wanted to follow up on that we weren't able to decide on.
Right. I think it's a general discussion. I don't know if there's any action to be taken per se.
I think we have to approve the, I think, didn't we have to approve like the next steps in the process? Is that that, well, I watched the last, when I watched the last meeting, that was my understanding that it could not be, that no action could be taken because it was a special meeting and it wasn't, we couldn't add things to the agenda at that time. Am I mistaken?
That, that is correct in regards to a special meeting, but I guess the bigger question remains as to what action is the board hoping to take tonight? And if, if it's just next steps, we've already kind of delineated next steps. We're not hiring, if you were looking to hire, for example, I'll give you a concrete example. If you're hiring a scourge firm, that would require action, right?
Got it.
But if we're, as I understood it, if we were deciding, there's basically three options, maybe more. There's either hire a search firm, and I actually did some research and I reached out and search firms, at least the ones that responded, and I asked very general questions because I just asked, you know, do search firms typically, I just went, I Googled superintendent search firms. Two firms responded and they said typically, if you hire us, we do an interim search for you for, it's complimentary. That's all I learned, all of that. But we also talked about potentially doing a job posting and we talked about whether or not we would just give names to Mr. Leonard and he would vet that. So basically, as I'm seeing it, there's three options that we discussed last week, but we couldn't take action because the item was added to the special agenda and you can't take action on items added that night. So we never honed in on, that's why we're having this discussion, and then the option to make a motion to decide. So we need to decide which route we want to go.
God, this makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Yep, I agree with that, and I do think we did talk about search firms and we don't have time. So when we start talking about the application timeframe, we're going to realize, you know, this is going to have to move quickly. So I'm all for making motion to have a discussion on next steps on the interim superintendent nomination and appointment.
I don't think we need to make a motion for the discussion. I think we need to make a motion when we decide what we're going to do. So I think the discussion-
Well, that's why I said next steps, you know, making a motion on the next steps in finding interim superintendent.
So if we decide, oh, the job, the job application is the route we want to go, then we would make a motion to say we want to move forward with that. Or, or if we say we want to hire a search firm, or if we say we want to just give names to Mr. Leonard, that's three separate. We have to vote on the specific action we want to take.
Yeah. So I guess my concern with a search firm, and I think I voiced this before, is that I don't feel as though this board should be the board that is beginning the process of hiring the next superintendent. I think that that needs to wait for the two new board members. And again, I expressed my concern about, I think, and I think we all kind of agree that this year, we would, it would, well, it would be best suited to keep an interim because of stability and consistency with everything that we have coming up this year. And so I would not, I, I think that I would not be in favor of hiring a search firm for an interim superintendent. I don't, I, I would not, because I don't know that the next board would be on board with the search for, I mean, that's a lot of research that has to happen as well, and as Director Vengadossalam said, our time is short.
Yeah, for, for clarity's sake, the search firm would also be doing, if you, if we went that route, a search firm would complimentary help you find an interim, but then would help you with the, and we're going to have to put out an RFP for a search firm before the board changes anyway, because that RFPs take time as well. So whether or not we choose to go with a search firm for the interim, we're going to have to take some action to get a search firm in place before November, before December.
Yeah, I'm also pretty good on RFP. I'm all for doing that.
Yeah, we will have to do that early on, if we're talking about six months with an interim. So I guess I, I would really like to talk about this job posting. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review it. What we did in 2014, but there is a timeline there, so I, I wanted us to kind of discuss that because we need to get moving on that. So I have some suggestions, and these are just suggestions. So when we look at the interim superintendent job posting as it was done in 2014, there was timeframe there and we had a lot more time than we do now. So my suggestion is going to be that we do put it out ASAP through communications team, get that out. But then we put the timeframe of the 17th, which is Tuesday for the position closing at 5:00 PM. And then 18th, at our executive session, we can talk about the selection of finalists. And 23rd and 24th, we would interview the candidates, if there are that many. And then on the 25th of our regular meeting, we would name the interim superintendent. So that's my thought on the dates, but that's a quick turnaround.
Oh, yes, I want to piggyback on that. I want to get something set with this interim process first. And, and looking at my calendar, that's, boy, the 17th, I understand, that's a pretty quick turnaround. I don't know. And the other thing, I've done some research, a little research too, and, and ask of some of our organizations about are there people out there and, and, and looking for interim superintendents? And the picture was pretty bleak from what the search I got.
It's my experience in hiring positions, and again, my experience is in a corporate world, but my experience is there are people that are looking for opportunities, they pay attention when potential opportunities come up. And so honestly, the idea of putting up a job posting is appealing to me. And I think that, you know, I think there are people out there that might be looking as well. And I'm, the question would be for someone else, where do we, where would we post such a thing? I know that there's Wazda has a place on their site where, that are superintendent openings, but where else would we be posting this? Like, could it be posted tomorrow if we agreed on it tonight?
Director Behringer, or Vice President Behringer, you could post that on Wazda, you could post it on AWSP, you could post it on Wassa. Wassa is probably the one, the one site that's looked at the most by central office administrators. I know that AWSP, their executive leadership have access to retired superintendents as well. And so I think there's three spaces that you potentially could post that and get a pretty good amount of people looking at it.
And we could also use social media, yes, as well?
Yes.
Yeah, and I seriously doubt that there aren't very many folks who are looking at this position or thought about it or, you know. So I don't know, I feel like the 17th is enough time. I mean, they would have had their resumes and all of that. They just need to polish it, probably. So. And what we did in 2014 is posted somewhere out there, I believe, with the interviews. So they can look at the specifications, but I didn't see anything very targeted there. I don't know if everybody read the superintendent job posting, the interim superintendent job posting. The other thing is, I'm hoping if not today, you know, we'll have an executive session on the 18th or somewhere there where we can also, it wouldn't be executive session, it would be the regular meeting, we could take action on the interview questions if we get to that point. We do need to narrow that down too. Unfortunately, I didn't think about getting these two files posted on board docs so we can review. But I'm hoping everybody's had a chance to read it.
Yeah, I read it in the little break we had between the executive session and now, personally. And I read it before. I think it was sent to us last week. Yeah, I just think you're absolutely right. We need to also hone in on those interview questions. That they should maybe be posted publicly so citizens can see too, if they want to be involved in this process. That might be a way, you know, completely, as transparent as possible is always my, my choice. And, you know, hiring, making sure we have a superintendent in place, interim and a regular superintendent. It's our most important, one of our most important jobs as board directors. And it's very important to me that we get moving on this. We've wasted, I, I think, I feel like we've wasted a lot of time and that's unfortunate, but we can't change the past. So I'd like to get moving on this as quickly as possible.
One thing to think about is that the availability of staff, because we are starting school in, in a few weeks. And so that, that is a huge, which is one of the reasons I was trying to push for maybe a 60-day interim position because there, there is a lot of work that goes into starting school with our administrative staff and they will have to be a part of this process with us. And so-
Kent says application, I'm sorry.
Because HR isn't, is going to be part of that as well. And so all of those things should, should be considered. So just that, again, and actually, I don't think, so the only reason we have to move very quickly is because we have a 30-day interim contract.
The only reason we have to move quickly is because we waited too long to move, honestly. I mean, that's why we have to move quickly. We, if we had started this process the week of July 19th, we would be very much farther along and we wouldn't be bumped up against school starting. So, and that's unfortunate. We can't change the past, but moving quickly. And, you know, the applications, maybe they could come to Kent Board instead of going through and then CC'd with Dr. Behringer. But, you know, whatever it takes, I-
If you'll let me finish my statement, I was saying that, understanding that there could be an option so that we could take our time and get a little bit more input as we needed. If we, we could, we do have the option to extend the interim currently for another 30 days. So, so I understand, and as you said, we can't change what happened, but it's happened. But moving forward, I feel as though we can make a more balanced decision in order to be able to do this the right way and not have to rush and not have to be in a difficult position of, of where we are right now and not, also not interfere with the, the work of the staff for this next year.
Again, I, I requested prior to last week's meeting that it be on the permanent agenda. Where even, every step of the way, things are slowed down. And this is one of those situations where I'm, I'm doing my best to be professional, but I'm pretty angry. We would be a week ahead if that, if what I had requested had even, but we're not. So every step of the way, every step of the way, I feel like requesting meetings that aren't getting on the agenda has slowed us down even more. So now we find ourselves in this position and I would like to move forward with the job posting as quickly as possible. And this is, I think, a good step. I feel like Director Vengadossalam brought some very reasonable steps forward for us. She actually mentioned it last week. You know, last week, we also got to see a lot of information that we didn't see as a board to understand the whole process. So, you know, this is, we have to do this work in public and special meetings are tricky and they're purposefully done so that we can make sure we're doing things as transparently as possible. I, it's unfortunate that things didn't get on the agenda, but the way we can handle that now is we can find steps where we can post the job. I agree with Director Vengadossalam's timeline. It's tight, but I, I propose the timeline she proposed, I agree with that. And I propose we move forward and we continue our momentum.
And my concern is what's best for our district and our staff and, and for our kids in getting and preparing for the school year.
Excuse me, my hand's been up. President Daniels, looking back on how quickly this has happened, I honestly probably have a little clearer picture that probably a 60-day interim extension for Chief Vela, or excuse me, interim superintendent Vela, forgive me with all these changes, would not be out of line. I, I think the turnaround, the biggest thing that I have a problem with is I read over the posting and it's not really applicable exactly to what's happening to us now. And it's not really defined perhaps on what we're looking for exactly now. And I'm not sure that that's critical, but it might be. So I'm wondering what harm we would have in, in, in really taking our step to do this posting just a little bit more carefully. And I, and perhaps because, because ahead of us is a lot with the opening up of the schools and the parents and the kids are all on edge and they don't know what's going to happen. I understand our staff needs to be working in our schools and one-on-one with our kids and our parents. I cannot see why our board could not take on maybe an extra meeting to make sure that posting is exactly the way we want it. And perhaps work on that to define it and integrate the questions from that that would be on there. And then perhaps, you know, just give us another 30 days with interim superintendent Vela. I, I don't see any problem with that. It's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't realize we would go this route. I thought we were keeping it to the 30-day, which is why kind of recommended the timeframe if we were going that route. I'm open to either, and I, I guess I'd like to hear from staff on time and what that would mean, look like, you know, so that we can get their input as well. So, I don't know, the, the interviews will need to be set up, they will need to be called by communications, you know, they'll need videos. So there's a lot of, and that's happening on a non-Wednesday, so yeah, I don't know the time comfort for everybody. So if we could have maybe Ms. Larmy or interim superintendent Mela.
Yeah, absolutely. Director Vengadossalam and members of the board, President Daniels, I think that Dr. Behringer can share with you what the processes are right now and the work that our team is doing currently. As we talked about, filling not only parent teacher positions, we also are filling administrator positions. So what they can share with you is a process of what it would take from a timeline perspective. So, Dr. Behringer, if you could share just kind of timeline in terms of what your team does in posting as it puts together an interview team as well as following through with interviews, et cetera.
Yeah, so when we go to post up a position, you're looking at a seven-day post. So you'd post the position for seven days. We'd look and see if we have the, the quality of applicants that you're looking for in that position. If not, you'd leave it out for longer. If you do, then you can then have the closing date at the end of the seven days and then you go through the setting up of the interviews. During that process, once the position is posted, you're probably reviewing and setting up interview questions. So you have the exact questions you want to be able to ask the applicants when you go into the interview. You're also setting up your interview team. So if the team is the, the board, then you're setting up, trying to find dates and times that everyone's available. And then determining at the end how many applicants you'd like to, to interview. So from beginning of posting of the position to interviewing and choosing a candidate, it could, it could be on a minimum side, you know, a week and a half, two weeks, depending on if we get to say, let's just say, if we fast track it and post it tomorrow, it would close next Thursday. You'd be setting things up potentially, you could interview on the following Monday, the 23rd, 24th, if people were available. But it does take time and, and we are in August. And so one of the caveats to us posting a position for an interim superintendent is a lot of superintendent vacancies have already been opened and filled with interim superintendents. So there may not be as many available out there. And so a seven-day period of time may be tight, but we could definitely see what's out there in seven days in posting. But it's important that we're posting a position that reflects exactly what we expect from the interim superintendent to do in the 21, 22 school year. So if, if you're looking, if we're looking at the previous posted interim superintendent job description from 2014, it doesn't reflect 2021 and going into a, you know, on the heels of the pandemic, but yet the, with the Delta variant being the way it is, there may be some pieces that we want to include in there that are more pertinent to 21, 22 school year. So you'll want to take the time to make those key pieces in there, then HR can help put that together in a postable document.
Thank you, Dr. Behringer.
So, and that, yeah, so we could go over that. So our next meeting, if we could, I mean, look, I'm on vacation. I took the time to do this today. So our next meeting, if we could, I mean, look, I'm on vacation. I took the time to do this today because it's that important to me. So, you know, if tomorrow night we are free, I don't know what the Google, you know, we all did doodle polls through the end of September, I think, to say when we're available for extra time. So um ha- not having that right in front of me now, the next time we're all all, at least a majority of the board is available to do that work, to get that posted as quickly as possible would be my recommendation.
So the board doesn't do the posting though. So it it would be actually drawn up by, so it's not the board that would actually write the job description or do the posting. So that's why I'm saying the HR would be involved in in all of those pieces.
Absolutely. I don't see how the job description is and the, let's face it, when the last superintendent was hired, it was a twenty-year-old job description. I don't see how a job description, this is our only employee, the the board would be involved. And I don't understand how we wouldn't be involved in the job description because it's our only employee.
So let me clarify, we wouldn't write the, I don't think we would need to write the job. I don't think we need to come together and write a job description. I think we could, I think a draft might be prepared considering all of the things because I can't imagine that everyone knows exactly what needs to go into. You may um or may not, I don't know. But I'm just saying that I don't think the board would be the ones drafting a job description. I think that that's a, that's part of legal, part of um HR. And then we would of course have input, but I don't think that's our, that we would be drafting a job description.
Okay, job description is separate from a job listing. So, you know, again, you can start with what we used in twenty-fourteen and you can add to it. And certainly there, you know, staff input, but ultimately, and then the job description itself, which is a separate piece, would, you know, you go from what you have already and you add, you know, you stop, start, add. You know, it's, that's the easiest way to do any of that. So I think that's what I heard Director Vangadossalam saying, suggesting is we look at the posting, the previous posting and remove or add any other pieces necessary.
Yeah, um we had input into this posting uh as a board, uh but it wasn't something we wrote up from the beginning to the end. Um so I think, yeah, and it's not comprehensive with the description, job description. So this is just to kind of talk about what is a priority for the board. Um the essential functions would be more of a, um I mean, there are minimum qualifications, desired personal characteristics. You know, those are things we have some input on. Um essential functions, if we don't see something here as um uh uh Dr. Behringer mentioned, you know, the COVID is not gonna be in here. Uh the response to, well, it says response to emergencies is needed, but do we want to be more specific? And then um the timeframe will need to change. Um so we do need to have a discussion about all of that because that has to get posted, the timeframe with the posting, so that everybody's ready and know when the interviews are going to be and all of that. So we do need a discussion as soon as possible to set the timeline, um not just the posting.
Director Vangadossalam, um to your point, I think it's really important if we're looking for a high-quality interim superintendent that we put our best foot forward and that we are organized and that the posting is reflective of what we're expecting that person to be able to do. Um and so I I think we have a a solid foundation from the two thousand fourteen posting to be able to then look through and be able to add or adjust things. And then HR would be responsible for making sure that gets all cleaned up and posted the way that we want it and the job description cleaned up as well. So looking for the input from our board um is gonna be important. So it might not be a lot of work, but I think having a dialogue amongst board members will be important um in any adjustment. So we can be transparent and accurate in the posting that we put out there.
So are we all agreeing? Not all, are we considering the sixty-day? Yeah, so that we can take a little bit of time.
Yeah.
It just appears to me that if we want to do this right, and again, this is a learning experience for me, I'm just speaking for myself, to see how fast things can go by and how we have to have so many considerations, including our staff time. And I mean, thi- this month is, wow, it's almost, you know, gone by already. And I want to make sure, at least from my point of view, that it reflects some of the ideas that I, as a person communicating with the community, would like to see in the interim posting. I don't want to write it. I I understand HR writes it, but I also understand, can we from afar, talk me legally about this? Um can we write suggestions to put in that to send to Human Resources or whoever puts it out? And then see some different drafts and then prepare to have a vote on maybe variations of the draft. For that tonight?
I don't know if we could all send, that would be like having a meeting, right? I don't think that we could all, I don't know, I mean.
Well, I worry. Yeah, I worry a couple of things about the virtual meeting, um but I also worry just about the timing. If you're doing that, the timing, how long that's gonna take in order to accomplish.
What we could do is we could, and and maybe we could ask HR to um look it over and and add some COVID, add some things that are required. And then when we come together on the seventeenth, we could review it and have conversation about that, about that meeting. And then we could move forward from there. So and and we can, if we have suggestions during that meeting, it could be discussed and implemented or whatever that looks like. And I think that that would be a good start to do it. And and I also would really think it's important that every board member is there. So which is why the dates for the meetings were chosen so that every board member could be in attendance because I think this is too important to miss board members for this conversation. Um so so those were the dates that every board member was able to attend, so.
Uh which date, uh President Daniels, you mentioned.
Well, the seventeenth and the twenty-third are when the meetings were set, but they were set because that was.
Okay.
That was when every board member could be there.
Yeah, I I do have an emergency on the twenty-fifth. So I, I mean, if we're considering sixty-day extension, I'm not sure. Uh I I know it's a budget meeting. I'm gonna try, but I don't know if I'm gonna be able to make it.
But just for clarification, because the only agenda item was next steps on the interim process, I think we can only, tonight, we can only, it sounds like we are all leaning towards a job posting. So that's the only thing we can take action on tonight. We can't do uh anything else, vote on anything else tonight. Is that correct?
We can vote on an extension of the contract, on the, on the current contract because it's steps, it's next steps for hiring, I believe, right, Curtis?
So the next steps for hiring, I I would be careful on taking action on a personnel report to extend a contract if it's not already been delineated. That's the one where that does seem like we would do that in a separate motion that I would want properly announced and on an agenda.
Okay.
That would be the eighteenth then we're talking.
Correct, for the next meeting.
What is our meeting on the seventeenth? We have a meeting on the seventeenth. There's, is there a meeting on the eighteenth? I didn't see that.
No, it's the seventh.
This Wednesday.
Seventeenth, but we have a meeting on the seventeenth.
On a Tuesday?
We do.
But tonight we could vote to, you know, the next step in the interim search process would be we decided we want to do a job, we want to do a job posting.
Yeah. And we could actually even wait really till the twenty-fifth to do the extension of of the contract. We could wait there and add it to that agenda.
Yeah, so tonight, the motion would be, we could make a motion, so, okay.
To post, to do the job posting.
Yes, so.
So someone needs to move to do that.
I move that the, that we use a job posting to find our long-term interim.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none, I will call, oh.
The motion is already on the floor, but it's worded kind of awkwardly. I I can't, we can't correct the motion, so, okay, I'll go, never mind.
Okay.
How so, uh how so, Director Hamada?
Pardon me?
How so?
I just think that that we're gonna use that to select the interim, is a tool. I mean, the interview is a part of it, the job posting, it just, it's, it's a combination of several things. That's not the only thing that we're gonna select. It's just worded just a little crazy, I think, so.
Okay, I guess what I was going from is we discussed having a search firm. We discussed uh sending names to Mr. Leonard and we discussed doing a job posting. And so of those three choices, that what seemed to be where we've landed is doing a job posting and all, all associated, you know, activities surrounding that job posting.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to that motion, Director, Vice President Daniels, that would just says that we would like to move to to have a a, a job posting be created and input for that, some of that coming to update that from the board itself? It's more definitive.
Uh Mr. Leonard?
Yes, you can do it that way. You can entertain an amendment which would take a vote to amend and then you would vote on the question. So it'll take two votes.
She can also accept a friendly amendment and and just do it.
Yeah, the the amendment is an intervening motion that requires a vote, so it will require a vote.
Okay. I've seen it done differently, so.
Okay, so, so you want to add to the decision to create a job posting? Because I guess you want to add that the board's gonna be involved, even though the board's going to be, we already established the board's gonna be involved with the job posting? You want that in the motion?
No, the the problem I have with this is, or wording that said exactly that we'll create a job posting, it, it's not, it's only one tool in determining who an interim would be. It's.
I think she said we'll move forward with posting the position, right? Is that, that's what, we're moving forward.
I think I said the board agrees to create a job posting just to find as part of, as in, to search a long-term interim. I don't know what I even said. I can, we can vote no on that motion and you can make a new motion, Director Hamada. At this point, if if you're more comfortable with that, that is not a hill I want to die on. So I'm, I'm good with, if we vote no on my motion and you make the new motion, I'm, that's fine with me.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the motion to the create a job posting to hire a new long-term or our long-term interim superintendent, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
I can vote.
Okay.
Okay.
All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extension, motion carries. All right, we are on to our personnel report, agenda item three point zero one is, and that's a consent agenda and then three point zero two.
I'm, we approved the consent agenda, three point zero one and three point zero two.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
My second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving our consent agenda, items three point zero one and three point zero two, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions, motion carries. That concludes our meeting for this evening. Um thank you so much and we are now adjourned. Have a great night, you guys.